Okay, the time's now 5:52, and I'll go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole to order. Tonight, we have basically one item on our agenda, finishing up the proposal number 28, which is authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds. And Tyler has put together, her controller has put together a presentation for us tonight to go along with that. And we have a few, Councilor Whitfield and Councilor Chavis and Ms. Wheeler are all on Zoom. You're a very small box over there, so if you have some questions, and I don't see, you have questions, you've raised your hand, please voice that out so we can get to your questions, if you have any concerns or thoughts.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is this on? It's not on.
Thank you.
Are we back on? Are we on?
The mic's on now.
I don't, are we, okay. I'm just looking at the agenda, you said there's only one thing, but there's proposal 24 that's also on the agenda for tonight for the Committee of the Whole. Are we not going to address that?
Thank you. So proposal number 24, this is the main item, and so proposal number 24, I think we'll get to it the first of the month when we're all together and everybody's here to discuss that. Okay, thank you. With that, Tyler, you're filling, the floor is yours, please.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So what I sent around was just kind of, all the feedback, I wanted to make sure we can capture everything into one document and make sure that that was circulated. So I'm hoping that you all had a chance to look through this, but if you didn't, we'll kind of go through it slowly. More of a reiteration of what Baker Tilly has presented before, I wanted to refresh based off some of the questions that were surrounding assessed value. I think this will walk everyone through how the tax rates are set, and then we can kind of get into more of an explanation of what we're trying to do. So I'll kind of kick off with the why. One of the reasons we are looking at these GO bonds is because of the recommendations. So we looked at every recommendation on the list that Baker Tilly provided. We are looking at number four right now, we can't do number five. Number one was a timing issue, so this is what we are working with. And we did look into this opportunity, and it looks to be one that we can do without raising taxes, so that is where this really stems from. What we're going to do is kind of take a step back and go through their presentation, I think this is back in May, that refreshes any memories on how we get to our tax rates. So you have your base, which is your net assessed value, and as Councilor Freeman is well aware, this is your assessed value of all your personal property here in the city minus your tax deductions and abatements. So what our levy is, is what we are trying to generate off that tax base. And that levy has a max growth that is provided by the state. I believe I might be jumping, jumping ahead, this is just an example of their NAV, and you can see how we get to the assessed value. But what I want to show you is the levy. Okay, so the max levy is provided by the DLGF. It's a growth factor that you get, and in 2023, the estimated at the time of this presentation, they're pretty close, it's 4.5%, it became 5. So that's a historically high growth factor. It is based, as you can see here, off the six-year average of non-farm personal income. That's probably why they're able to make pretty good estimations. So you can see here, this is just a list of what's not affected, does not impact. A lot of people think you're more population or property value, so the values is again, goes back to your assessed value, and that's what you're pulling from, but does not impact your levy. They did provide an example using ours. You have a controlled levy and a non-controlled levy. We just have our general fund levy that's controlled, so what that means is that's the levy that they are giving our growth factor for. The non-controlled is the outstanding debt that you do not have changing with your growth factor. And then the CCD there, the Q cap fund, that's an established rate. That's one that's a little more unique than the others, it has a actual specified rate. So that grows with your assessed value, because it keeps that rate flat. And you'll see a demonstration of that as well. And this is their breakdown they provided, we're going to get into a detailed one that shows our 23 here in a moment, but you can see each tax rate for each fund, but really each levy, and how that kind of comes back to your tax levy here in the third column, fourth column. So our current tax rate is .7257. The goal is to attempt to keep that rate flat, and you will see what happens if we don't issue the GO bonds in our example. This is one of the things that I really liked, actually, this is the main slide I want to get to, is the correlation between the NAV and the tax rates. So if your AV decreases, your tax rate will increase, assuming your levy is flat. If your assessed value increases, your tax rate will decrease. So that's what we're seeing in this situation. Because our levy grew by 5%, but our assessed value went by 18%, what you're seeing is that second bullet point right there happening. So our tax rate is decreasing, and all we're really trying to do here is lock it in at the current rate, and you'll see that in our example. They give a couple of examples here, I think these are pretty, pretty good examples. In scenario one, if your base AV is 500 million and your levy's 2 million, you can see the tax rate. If your AV goes up, like in our case it did, the tax rate lowers to get the same levy of 2 million. So that's, that's really what we're seeing here. They do give you your CCD funds, so because the rate, and this is a unique one, the rate is the same, your levy increases with your AV proportionally. And you'll see that in our example. And this is a more detailed one, I'll get to, if you want to look at this one over and have questions on it, you can, but I'll get to our actual example. Right here is our 2022 certified levy. You can see at the bottom of the 2022 column down where the total COL tax rate is, that is our 2022 tax rate. Our 23 estimated tax rate will drop about 7% if we do not issue GO bonds. So what we're trying to do is, you can see bond three, and then the fire building debt, in 24, that fire building debt falls off. Even without that, what we're trying to do is issue these GO bonds to add a debt line so that you have another tax rate that will keep the rate flat. You can see if we do nothing, we will have a significant decrease in our tax rate. So this is an opportunity that the schools use, other municipalities use it, it's a good way to keep your rate flat, and you can kind of control it in a way by doing this. I think, I'll stop right here for questions before I get into the projects. This is just kind of reiterating the difference between the AV and then our levy and how we get to the kind of end product, which is the tax rate.
Does anybody have any questions so far? I think, I don't have any questions, so I think we're fine to move on. Thank you.
We'll jump into proposed projects. So we've, we've sent these out a couple of times, but I wanted to get them into one again document for everyone. So we are trying to allocate funding, we have designed the community park parking lot, but we need to get that reconstructed off of Franklin Road. We have allocated a million towards that. We have Veterans Park needs some attention as well, if you've been out there. We would like to continue expanding our recreational sports at Lee Road, as you can see there with the additional eight pickleball courts. And then we're trying to again, take a big focus on ADA accessibility. If you take a look at the Parks Master Plan, that's a big piece, not a lot of our parks are considered ADA accessible. This funding would significantly help that. And one thing that was nice, I saw Cory through in here when she was looking, looking through things, is the 25,000 for programmable locks for all the park restroom facilities. I think that's probably an issue that we run into pretty frequently, but this would be a nice automation to have. And then the last piece here would be funds to use in design for the 59th Street building expansion. So every time I talk with Hen again, these guys are running into some capacity issues there at the 59th Street garage, and the parking lot there is in pretty bad shape as well. This will help us design it, get that project kicked off. Now, these are in order of priority, so what I'll get into is the amended bond ordinance that was sent around today. I can pause here for questions, or we kind of talk about that, but I want to illustrate that those are in priority.
Yeah, I got a question. Just want to make sure I heard you correctly. On the Parks project, the first project at the top with the parking lot, the million dollars, is that for the project? A complete project or just the design?
That's the complete reconstruction of that parking lot.
Okay.
Kind of use the, that parking lot as the background image, so you can kind of see some of the hot holes there, but if you've been to the Fourth Fest, you can, you've seen that all the parking lots at Community Park are in pretty rough shape.
Excuse me, Tyler. Engineering has already been done on that project?
Yeah.
And how much was that again?
I believe it was 75,000 or 85,000? It had been a little bit more.
74,000.
74,000.
Because I guess there was a vast misunderstanding when we approved that money, I thought that was for the parking lot, but apparently wasn't.
No, yeah, I apologize if there was that miscommunication, yeah, if I wish, that would be enough to cover it, but we had the design in hand and...
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't do parking lots, so that was a number that was told to us, and, and I don't remember anything being said at, at that time that, you know, this is just going for engineering, but it won't be for the final project. I would just, and maybe it's just a misunderstanding on my part, that's why I voted for it, was that, you know, that was going to be the money to do the project. So anyway, I was just wanting to clarify that.
There are some, there are some drainage issues and things like that that really need to be addressed, so that was one of the parking lots. Some of, some parking lots, we can just go in and resurface and do some repair and things like that, but the expense of this is because of all the drainage issues and things that we have that we need to correct, and so this one is a little more expensive to do.
Mr. Chair, may I ask, just for clarification, my recollection, according to Councilor Wells' question, might be, after I started thinking about this at the last, after the last council meeting, was, I believe, in a previous request for bonding, I think the reconstruction was a part of that. Is that what I'm, that's where folks are starting to think we approved it, but that bond was not approved, correct?
That was an additional appropriation. So we had an additional appropriation at one point on the agenda for the Stairway Center roof and the Community Park parking lot, and then we just went down. Because we needed to do the design and timing issues, we pulled that out and just went with just the Stairway Center.
Right.
So we didn't do an additional appropriation even due to the design, we just pulled that out of the budget as, as is.
Right, so I think that's where counselors are recollecting the fact that we thought that we may have appropriated those funds for the actual reconstruction, but apparently by your clarification, that was pulled out and only the engineering stayed within, and that's what was funding. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Partially correct. The amount remaining was the Stairway Center roof in that instance, yes.
I have one other question, if I may. This being your wish list for this bond, but none of this is actually in concrete, is that correct? I mean, when the money actually comes to pass, and a part or all of this could be changed to do something entirely different?
That's a great question. So one of the things that I did with Bruce Donaldson today was taking that feedback, I understand there's, we don't want to sway from these projects, this is what we want to get done. So we amended the ordinance today to not only cut down the total bond issuance amount from the 5.8 original ordinance down to 3.6. The first section now references this specific project list, and so the way it's written, it is written so that we have to do these in order of priority. So we can't deviate, I can't wake up tomorrow and go, Community Park parking lot's not a priority, I'm going to do Lee Road. I have to do these now in order.
But there's nothing by statute that would make you have to do it at all, if you choose not to?
I have a question. I mean, you'd sit on the money and it would sit there and do nothing.
You could put it to other projects if you want.
No, that's, that's kind of the point I was making with lists, by having these as an exhibit and referencing that, we are required to do this list in order.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand what Maria said earlier then. There was a bond that was the, okay, I want to make sure I'm correct, I don't want to say nothing wrong. You pulled out the parking lot out of another project?
It was an additional appropriation request, yes, we were trying to find out the general fund.
Oh, the request was never given to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll say this, what was given was what we needed to the Stairway Center roof, just not also the parking lot.
Okay.
The request we had on the table was approved with an amendment to take out the lot. And this is a great, I mean, I will say this, this is a great way to fund this parking lot where it doesn't impact our general fund, because as you, as you see back on, on this page here, the great thing is that you have your general fund levy of 128. If we were to do a debt levy, that's outside of our control levy in the general fund, so your operations is not going to be hit, we're not needing to use general fund cash to fund this project. You're going to preserve our general fund cash reserves by issuing this outside, and then you lock that tax rate in. And the, and the flip side of that too, is it's also short term, so it's not...
Anytime we use a bond, we're not using general fund, we're saving that money, I mean, that's just...
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, in contrast with the appropriation request, since we're talking about it.
We have money to, yeah, let me save these.
I think I have two follow-up questions with that, if you don't mind, Tyler. One, on the 74,000, where was that appropriated then if we didn't use it in that appropriation?
That was in, we had enough in the Parks, we already had enough in the Parks budget to do at least enough design. So we went through and we're like, okay, if we just, we want to get it designed so that we can know that we're ready to go. Because it was a timing issue, right, initially with the first request. So we now know that, I believe, if we get this through, we can guarantee that this lot will be done by the Fourth Fest. So we've kind of figured out our timing issues because we have design already, so we can get to bid pretty quickly on this now. At the time, we weren't going to get it done this year, so it's still a 23 project even per the last conversation.
Yeah, that kind of, no, I'm just saying, because in that same proposal, there was about another, you know, 60 or 70,000 in requests for diesel fuel and other items in that April, I think it was in April we did that. So if there was funds for this, why did we have to do an additional appropriation for the fuel?
Different budget category, so those were supply items, that's a service charge.
Okay.
Good question.
And did, was there an RFP or for this, since it was a 74,000, 75,000 project?
For engineering, special service, I believe Sri got quotes, but you're not required to bid that out. He received three quotes, not required, but he did get three quotes, the lowest.
Okay. And is that where you're getting the cost estimate for the actual project? Okay.
Great question.
Any other que, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Would, any, would those cost estimates, given that that was done a while back, have increased due to inflation and other things for this upcoming year?
Yeah, so at the time, we were looking for a million to do engineering and construction, and now we're just looking for the million to do construction. So we have seen some inflationary costs in that, in that aspect, yeah.
And also on the other parking lots, Eric actually met with someone and got estimate, worked with estimates just a couple of weeks ago to get pretty accurate what today prices are with what we're looking to do at Veterans Park and, and those parking lots.
I would like to ask one more question, and this is a little bit off topic, and I don't know if the Director of Parks might like to address this, but I was wondering, I tend to be more concerned about the facilities available for ADA compliant facilities such as saucer swings and other things, rather than just the capability for pass, which many of these parks, not all of them, but some of them have fairly good sidewalks, and I know that's not ADA compliant, but there's some ability to get to the facility, whereas there's nothing available for someone who might have a disability.
Once they get there, correct. So you'll see in this request that some of this does talk about pathway reconstruction, and it's also, we're looking at port and place surfaces at Community Park, which we've just ordered a new playground, and it will have some of those handy, those accessible structures in it. And then the other one is Alexander Park, which we're just now putting in, will be accessible also. So looking at these projects, we've included those accessible. Every playground is accessible, it's just amount of accessibility.
Right, to meet the federal ADA compliance, right.
The thing we have now is, is accessible, it's, play value isn't as great on some of the units as the newer units we're putting in. The port and place services just adds, well, it's the same material that's under the musical swings at, at the cultural campus, so it's a aggregate, and then it's rubberized, vulcanized rubberized service that's, meets the attenuation criteria, so if someone falls on it, it meets those, those criteria, but it's, and it's, and the longevity of it is, it's less maintenance, of course, than, than mulch or any other surfacing, so. But yeah, we're taking those, those things into account also, trying to, if we make the path accessible, we need to have something for it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I can kind of see you, Councilor Whitfield or Councilor Chavis, if you will.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of questions, if it's okay at this time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back over the finance part of the short-term bond. We've decreased it from 5.8 down to 3.6, and you gave us a list of the capital improvements that you want to use this for. Understanding that we only can pay this bond back by using funds from the assessment, are we locked in for the next two years, '23 and '24, according to the housing market?
Locked in, locked in, Mike. I might need you to clarify what you mean on that. So what we're trying to do is the debt issuance will raise this 23 estimated back up to the 22 current, so it'll keep our rate flat.
Yes.
So the way that I recall the last time Bob spoke about it was, even if we don't see an AV growth, it's, the way they're going to structure the bonds is assuming no levy or AV growth in the future, the rate is flat. Historically, that's not the case, the AV has gone up an average of 4% over the last 10 years, but it's kind of on the lower end, worst-case scenario type situation, so.
Okay, that gives me a little more clarity. So my next question then is, worst scenario, worst scenario. We understand this is a short term. If it drops significantly in the assessed values of homes, can we refinance this bond?
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time here in the response, please.
Adam Strobel with Barnes and Thornburg Bond Council for the city. So I'm not an accountant and municipal advisor, but I mean, you're talking about if, if rates increase, interest rates increase, that might negate any, any savings that you would be able to have on any, on any refunding. And I mean, they're such a short term, by the time you got to all the refunding, I mean, it would be paid off shortly thereafter, anyway.
Unlike a 20-year bond, where, where you would have that option, that we've refinanced many bonds, but with this short term, yeah, the likelihood of, you know, you'll have it paid off by the time, if the rates drop to 3%, then maybe, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if rates were to like plummet, I mean, it would have to plummet a lot, because I mean, you're also going to pay off a larger chunk right in that first...
First year.
Anyway. So that's where your, sort of is anyway.
And can I ask a follow-up question to that, Chair?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Councilor Chavis.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't think that it would make any sense to refinance a bond like this, right? I mean, just the cost of loan, a loan of redoing this bond, I think would not be good, right? But also, my understanding from what Mr. Donaldson said in the meeting is that if the assessed values do not grow as anticipated or stay on pace, let's say the assessed values go down dramatically due to market swings, then the only, the only real option we would have would be to increase taxes. Is, is that an accurate statement to pay for the bond?
We can increase taxes.
Yeah, or go ahead.
Well, I would, because of the way that the levies are done, we wouldn't even get to control that. So your debt rates, the levies get set at the DLGF level, so we can kind of, we can calculate those, but your general fund levy, we wouldn't even have a choice if the rates, if we saw like a 50% AV lot, like that's something that dramatic, we wouldn't even get a say in how to kind of combat that. Now, the counter is technically, we do have the ability to not take the max levy in the general fund, so we could offset it for a year. I mean, there, there is that worst-case scenario where you could reduce, you have a maximum general fund levy, but you could just not take the max. Everyone always does, they just operate that way, but you could, you could just not take the max levy for the general fund for that one year. You might lose yourself in the general fund in levy of $100,000, but that would allow you to offset to keep the rates flat, but that would be in a very, I mean, worse than 2008-type situation.
So what you're saying is that if the assessed value that you're projecting isn't reached, and the payment falls, or the, the collection falls short, the revenue falls short, the balance has to come out of the general fund?
No, no, the balance doesn't come out of the general fund, and I think Mr. Donaldson corrected our counsel attorney on that during the meeting. He said that repayment cannot happen out of the general fund. It can only happen through taxes.
Through the, yes, through the debt levy itself.
Yes.
So that's what, this, this first scenario here is showing if the assessed value were to decrease, your tax rates increase, and I'll put an asterisk there with, to Baker Tilly's report, is you don't really get to control that necessarily, especially on the debt levies, you're required to take what you need to pay your, to service your debt, or else, you know, cities across the country, especially in the United States, would have issues with bond ratings if that were the case, because you could default on debt. So it's a backstop to defaulting, but what I'm suggesting is that, I'm saying, if it was a really crazy scenario, you can, you're not paying it out of the general fund, but you could reduce your general fund levy so that your tax rate doesn't go up. That's kind of what I'm saying. Oh, so you wouldn't be paying out of the general fund, you'd just be reducing how much money you take into your general fund.
Okay, that makes sense, yep. Okay, that makes sense.
Any, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Councilor Wells.
Yeah, Tyler, I'd like to get a little bit of clarification. You've dropped the request on this from 5 million to 3 million, is that correct?
5.8 to 3.6.
I'm sorry?
5.8 to 3.6.
Right, okay. As you know, I had some trouble with emails, and so I'm not sure some that I got and what I didn't get, but this wish list that was given, I think was when it was up around 5 million. Is this same wish list still a viable list with the 3 million now, or?
It is, so what we have here is based off the 3.6. What I have always told everyone internally is to run with about that level when you're trying to come up with your projects initially, because we weren't sure, so as we were getting closer, we would know. And then now that we're at a point where we can really detail the projects and lock ourselves in, we were able to comfortably reduce that. So I think that first 5.8 came in, it was kind of a best-case scenario with the way interest rates were, with them increasing, and then kind of how we're doing it shorter, and we were able to lower it down to 3.6.
Are there any of these projects, any of these projects on the doable list if this bond isn't approved?
Say that one more time, is there?
Anything that's on that wish list, is any of it doable through other means other than this bond?
On a technicality, all of them, doing them all other, another way would be difficult, but, you know, 25 grand for... but you know, 25 grand for programmable, programmable locks, I mean, you had to pay cash for something like that, you'd find 25,000. But again, our budget that's proposed and adopted is already balanced, so you would be using cash reserves. So that's where the question changes. You have 20% reserves, could we fund this and deplete our general fund? Technically, that's not advisable.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but still, all right, that's what I had, thank you.
That's a good question.
Counsel, Counselor Danny, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Or really, I don't want to ask a question, I just want to make a clarifying statement. So the amount that was changed from the 5.8 to the 3.6, and the projects being specifically spelled out was a request that I made based on feedback from counselors not feeling comfortable with putting 5.8 when only 3, a little bit over 3 billion of projects had been identified. So I just want to state that for the record that, you know, your, your request, that was your request, and I sent that to Tyler, and the update was made.
Thank you for that clarification.
I don't see any other questions, Tyler. Do you have more of your presentation to go through?
That's it. Very much appreciate the opportunity, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Well, I, I think this specific topic is actually on the agenda for the council meeting, which starts in about six minutes, so there's nothing else for the committee as a whole. Counselor Chavis, just, I was going to conclude this meeting and give us a short break and then begin the other meeting at 6:30.
Do we need to recommend it to the full council, or is it...
Okay.
That's good.
We do have to make a recommendation with full council.
Do we need to make a recommendation from the committee as a whole to ourselves?
No, it's not.
I don't know.
Just want to make sure.
I don't know if we necessarily need to do that. Okay, all right. With that, I'll adjourn the committee of the whole, and we'll read at 6:30 for our council meeting. Thank you.